Okay, you're all set.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is Sam's one nation under God, indivisible, like liberty and freedom of speech. And it is six thirty, so we're going to open up the September tenth, twenty twenty four town council meeting here at the office. We're also live on Facebook. All the town councillors are present this evening, as well as town manager Melissa Gell. Really, the next thing on the agenda is to, and I do it, make a motion to accept the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four town council minutes as presented.
Second.
There's a couple of errors on the back page. So the vote was five oh, and there were only four of us here, so it should have been four.
Okay.
And there's one line that I didn't really understand. That's some management report, first paragraph, last line. What does that mean?
Well, it says asset.
You're intending to attempt contact with the judge.
Judge and Mr. Toothbaker. So Mr. Toothbaker is the appointed
Right.
for Liam. So I asked our attorney to continue to attempt to make contact with the judge and Mr. Toothbaker.
Okay.
Because they haven't been successful in reaching the.
Oh, so it's just the one of the.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or corrections from the minutes from last meeting? If not, we'll vote Larry, Charlie, Jim, Dwayne was excused, and Mark's side. Next thing on the agenda is citizens' requests. Do we have a citizens' request this evening?
It's not a request exactly. My name is Elon Gay and I live at fifty two Main Street in Bradley, which happens to be next to the embankment on Bullen Street, between Main Street and the bridge. And around eleven AM on the Saturday morning of Labor Day weekend, I noticed somebody had demolished all the greenery on the embankment. And I assumed the town was paying somebody. And being a holiday weekend, probably that was it, but they would be back when the work week began to clear away the debris. And when that didn't happen, I stopped by the town office and Melissa looked into it and she said that let people or councillors or whoever had decided not to pay for the debris removal.
I said that the contractor, I said, the contractor said to me that the debris should be left there because it helps with erosion. It's not really debris. It's like shippings of the the leaves and elders were coming into the road and causing traffic problems and visibility problems. So that was removed. And he said that it would be left there to help with the erosion and that it would green back up within the next spring. And so I said, I am not going to approve to have it removed, but please come and see the town council if you don't agree with that. And I think that's why you're here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where is it? Where is it located again?
Um, it's on Bullen Street, Bullen Street Bridge. So you first you go across the bridge and it's right there, from there until around the corner to Highland Avenue.
Chip around the corner to the left?
Yes.
To the left.
Was it run through a chipper, Melissa?
No, he has a piece of machinery that goes over the rail and cuts the vegetation away from the roadway.
So grinds it maybe when he cuts it or?
Um, it just kind of cuts it and leaves it there. So it's like a.
It's a flail, you know, flail mower?
Yeah.
And just chews everything out.
Right, so it's not laying in like brush then?
Yeah. It's tree limbs and small trees and wood chips and fragments.
I may have.
And it's just unsightly. And I had noticed in the town report that the code enforcement officer had made a comment to the effect that Brad, we had good neighbors and they wouldn't do anything detrimental to a letting property in that home. I might have a picture. I'm thinking about the town without being a good neighbor.
Yeah, that's what I expected.
Yeah.
It's like Arnold did all of Forest Avenue, both sides, just like that.
Is it, is that your, is that your house? Is that her house?
That is the east side of her home. Yeah, that's a good one.
Is that what she's looking at?
Yeah.
Okay. And your, your request would be the town consider.
Cleaning up the mess.
Cleaning up the brush?
I think I put a copy of the letter that I wrote to Elon Gay in your office. Yeah.
And, and again, the recommendation or your recommendation would be to clean up the brush or?
To come and take it away.
Right, right, right. But for what, what section?
From where it starts before you get to the bridge, to the bridge itself on my side.
Um, is that town property that gets on?
Yeah.
Just on the main street side of the bridge?
If you're turning in from Main Street, it would be on the left side of Bullen Street. And there's that embankment and I have a trailer down there. And I try to keep it neat and so I was really upset when that happened.
The, the reason it was done is because the brush was coming over the road and people were coming onto the other side. And actually, people walk on that. Students use it to go back and forth to school, so not so much anymore, but there are walkers on that. Um, and also, it was part of a cleanup. We cleaned all the way around the corner because people that are coming from Bullen Street, the Milford area, over to the Bullen Street Bridge weren't able to see cars. I didn't take a picture of it before. It's been a couple of years since we cleaned it up, but.
Has it been cleaned up before?
Yeah.
In a similar fashion?
Yes. I did have some of it removed before, um, but this the contractor feels that it would be more prohibitive to keep it there, would actually prevent additional brush coming because that is going to hold down the vegetation that is there now.
That, that is the, the dispallies have found that that is the acceptable way to do it is with a flail mower. And if you notice that Forest Avenue and RNO, RNO did both sides of Forest Avenue for miles with the flail mower and they just flailed it, lay it right there, let it stay on the ground. What we really need to do is get after the state to do one seventy eight because because the state's guide rails, I mean, it's coming way over into the road.
I was going to mention that too, but I just.
But that's the way.
Thinking that's not a road.
That's the way they handle that now is they handle it with a flail mower and they just let it sit there. It, it actually compacts the ground so that it won't wash away. If you take too much of it out, you'll get erosion. I don't know whether the road so, so jail property, right? So it would maybe erode down into your property if they take too much of it away.
I don't understand your question. The embankment has the road on tour.
Yes.
And my yard is at ground level at the bottom of the embankment.
Yeah. Oh, so if you take too much of the vegetation off, you get a heavy rain, all that dirt is going to go down in your yard because the water is going to wash it right down there. There's nothing to hold it back.
I don't think that would happen, except if there was another big flood. But as far as I know, that stuff's been growing there for years. And sometimes they do trim it and it hasn't happened lately. And I just think it's so unlikely to be left like that where somebody can see it. If it happens in places where nobody sees or they cares, it's different.
Well, I certainly wouldn't want you to think that we don't appreciate you keeping your property looking nice. Uh, but it sounds like the contractor here who did this work is suggesting that leaving the material there is better for the ground.
That's totally ridiculous. I've been there for years and I know.
Yeah.
He just doesn't want to be bothered. I don't know how much you're paying him, but maybe he's being overpaid. He didn't really do a very good job. It's one of those sort of slash and hack and chop things.
I did agree with that. I'm not going to elaborate on that, but it works for the town. I disagree with that. He did a wonderful job doing that. He also did brush trimming on Brown Street and Broad Street and West Street, and I received absolutely no complaints about that.
Well, I, I understand the machine that he used and I, I do understand that it might appear to be unsightly, but it's beneficial to leave it there as opposed to taking it out.
I see that.
Okay, well, we're going to have a disagreement.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I can't comment on how it looks because I haven't seen it. I mean, I saw the picture, but I mean, I'll, I'll definitely, you know, swing by and, and, and take a look at it. But if, you know, and we can contact, contact the contractor. Again, he's already mentioned, I guess, already.
I did contact him when she came in and spoke to me and asked, you know, what was the intent and what was his, what was his thoughts and intention and, um, he, as he stated, what he wrote in the letter.
Okay.
Was to the residents that were most affected at any of the locations he did the trimming, were they at least notified that it was going to happen or had not typically done?
Only time I ever notify a resident of work that's going to be done is if like a dry rig pulver is going to change because then I need to be able to, you know, organize time in and out. But if work is happening on our roads, I don't typically.
And same thing with the grass cutting, you know, along the side of the roads, or you'd have to notify everybody.
Yeah. And the grass cutting is very similar. When the grass is cut, it's just left. And we don't go around and, and pick up the grass. It, it gets put down and then it eventually goes away and it comes back every year.
But we appreciate you coming in absolutely and letting us know the concern. Like you said, I'll, I'll, I'll definitely swing by after the meeting if it's still layout or just not layout. Um, you know, tomorrow, just to see how it looks, if there are any concerns there. But it sounds like, you know, the, the contractor had said it's best, that's the protocol, you know, it's, it's the best way to do is to leave the, the materials there. It sounds like other towns are doing the same and the same was done even in our town for other streets, other areas, but, um, we'll, we'll take a look.
Your gentleman will come and look?
I'll take a look, yes, absolutely.
Because what I'm thinking is you wouldn't want it next door to wherever you're living. And I don't really think that there's any reason why it should be there about erosion or any of that.
Yeah, I mean, if anything's hanging over, I'm guessing there's not.
Also, I don't know if you have a separate account for that type of thing, but Melissa said there were several areas where this was happening. And I don't know where those areas are. I would like to see them because probably they're not next to anybody's store yard.
Where were they again?
Brown Street, Brown Street, which is almost across the street from you. We, we did a whole bunch of trimming up on Brown Street, on West Street, which goes by the old Ball Field area. And we're also going to be doing some on Cran Street in the next couple of days.
So those areas, so far as I know, don't really have any letting door yards.
Brown Street has four homes on it.
Cran Street.
And in front of them or next to them, this is going to happen?
Yeah, it already has happened.
It has happened, so if I go there, I can see it.
Absolutely.
That's from Main Street to the river.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah.
I can't picture it on that side of the street where the houses are.
Well, it, I, I, it's Brown Street. It's Brown Street. I always get brown and bright confused, but it is Brown Street. It's the first one up over the hill.
I know where it is.
Yeah.
And I know where the houses are. And I'm thinking they just have ordinary door yards in front of them or beside them. So this is probably on the other side of the street.
Yeah.
It is on the other side of the street.
Yeah, and the trees that came up over, that we had a lot of tree growth up over, um, the road, so those had, that had to be removed.
And that was in the separate account of that project.
And it comes out of the town road construction account.
And it isn't that they allot so much money to each area?
No.
It's just one lump sum.
Yeah. It's wherever, so we're, we're as a municipality are responsible for trying to keep our roads safe. And that means they travel, right? So that's just part of the whole process. Every year we have grass trimming done. We have a, a company that comes around and most back all of the vegetation and all of the um, the roadway, the ditches and just so it doesn't come up over the road. And as people complain about visibility, it's my job to make sure I clean that up. And that's, that's what happened there. I had several complaints about the Bullen Street um, corner and that the vegetation was coming up over the bridge. And cars were going onto the other side of the road to avoid the vegetation.
So far as I know, there wasn't anything on the roadside of the guard rail that would be a problem.
Well, I disagree. And I think we're just going to have to disagree, unfortunately. I've had it cleaned before, right? We acknowledge that. And for the same exact reasons, because the vegetation was coming up over the guard rail. Maybe it wasn't coming completely into the road, as you said, but if I'm going to have an area cleaned, I'm going to have all of that vegetation cleaned out.
Yeah, I mean, I really think any vegetation with a guard rail is considered, you know, a concern, if a little bit or a lot, like someone was saying earlier, one seventy eight needs to be done. But it's not on our road, but.
Yeah.
But again, we appreciate you coming in and, and letting us know and I'll, I'll definitely swing by. Um, also, I wrote down Brown Street, West Street, and any crams going to be done?
Cran Street, I'm hoping in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Uh, that's going to be, there's a big tree that's overlapping Cran Street, as you first pull in. Um, and we've had some complaints from the school bus and our trash trucks and power trucks and oil trucks that are going up there because it's hitting, and people with campers have been issuing complaints too because it's hitting their mirrors.
Anything else? Hold on, we will jump down to manager report.
Okay, so, um, I did contact our municipal attorney regarding forty three Highland Avenue. Um, and the recommendation is that the town council, if we're going to keep the property for municipal use that we have an appraisal done. Um, the discussion was is that we would try to condemn the building or declare it dangerous. And their concern is if we do that, since we own it, it would be, could be determined that we're doing so to lower the value, which could potentially put us in line for a lawsuit because of the new law. Um, so I haven't moved forward with that. I obviously wanted to discuss it with you. Um, another thing that's hap- happened there is, um, the resident across the street at forty two Highland Avenue had contacted me about two or three weeks ago, maybe two was be, two weeks ago, and he's constructing a new septic system in his lot next to him. Um, and his contractor, when they're installing the septic system, ran into some under drainage. And Highland Avenue is all under drain, all of their ditching is under drain. So they contacted me and John Milligan and I went out and looked at it. And I made, John and I made a determination that we would replace the pipe that they ran into because number one, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't disturbed when it was found. Number two, they were going to put more material on top of it for, for the septic system. We wanted to make sure that it would, um, hold up to that. And number three, it's, we didn't know who the, the gate was. So I hired John Milligan to go out and replace that pipe, which he did. The bill is in the Z rooms warrant. And as they looked into it, they think that the water for that pipe is coming from the water on forty three Highland Avenue. So I'm thinking as we move forward with this, number one, I'm glad I did it because if we use it, that's going to be taken, the water issue will help. And number two, I think we can deduct that price from the price of the home because it was done for that property, but just wanted to let you know about that.
The water is coming, it's like a, like a positive drain from the basement?
We're not a hundred percent sure. We haven't been in the basement. Nobody really wants to go into basement. Um, but we're assuming that it has something to do with water from that property. We have plans for all the under drainage and we, it didn't really coordinate with what we had for plans, so. Question one, do you want me to look into getting an appraisal for the property?
I would think it makes sense to do that. I don't know how much it's going to cost, but again, that would come from the price of the property, would it not?
Mm-hmm, it would.
I'll make a motion to do the appraisal.
A second ahead. Motion has been made accepted to do appraisal on forty three Highland Ave. Um, as is, as it stands right now.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments on that? If not, we'll vote Jim.
I abstain. I'm not sure on that one.
Okay, Dwayne?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Mark's side.
Okay, um, so Mark and I met with eleven taxpayers regarding the reevaluation. And so I would consider the reevaluation complete. I did prepare a memo for you, uh, this evening, that this, the five abatements that Mark recommended. He went and visited, uh, these five properties and the other, um, other people who either didn't approve an abatement or had a conversation with them, no abatement was requested. And so the payment for the reevaluation is also included in the warrant this evening.
Melissa, I'm curious about the process. If we should happen to deny an abatement request, that goes to the county eventually.
So if if the town council denies an abatement request, yes, it would go to the county. Mark had, did tell a resident that he was not going to recommend an abatement and that they needed to bring it to you. So I assume that you're going to be getting an abatement request from that resident.
I saw that in your.
Yes. If you deny that abatement, then that resident has an opportunity to go to the county commissioners for, uh, appeal.
Okay, so my question is that, that goes before a county hearing at a regular meeting for the county?
Yes, yeah.
One, one question on the, um, eight ninety seven Main Street. It says overbuilt. What does that?
So eight ninety seven Main Street is a property, obviously towards Eddington, uh, um, line. It has multiple garages. And so it takes, it was for sale for a very long time because it's a really unique buyer that's going to use it. They now are selling snowmobiles or motorcycles, um, imported type cars. Excuse me. So Mark's, um, opinion is that property isn't assessed as high as some properties that would just be a, a home with a garage because this has a home with a huge garage and then another garage and then a double Y. So it's just a unique property, so it actually isn't assessed as high as what he had originally assessed it for. And he also did an inspection and discovered that part of what he thought was a garage was actually just a storage type set, so.
Why did he not do the reduction when he did the?
Valuation.
Revaluation.
Well, he did not visit properties.
Yeah, okay.
He just applied factors to certain neighborhoods with certain criteria. So he never visited anybody's properties.
And he has visited now.
He has visited those now.
And these are his recommendations?
Yes.
Any questions?
I, I have a question on the one thirteen cram.
Yes.
I'll just ask on the surface. We haven't heard from others yet.
We have not. And he and I discussed that, like, do we want to do um, in a blanket and he wanted people to come so he could have an opportunity to go to their property and not just do a blanket, the, the reduction.
So he waits until he gets requests?
Yeah.
Okay. So his reduction there talked about the property was in a different condition than as listed in the commitment for one of the reasons why he recommended an abatement. Was that the only reason?
No, because of, of one fourteen.
He also.
Yeah, and then that's devaluing their property because of what's happening there. But then he went to visit the property and found that it wasn't in the condition that assessed it.
So with respect to the others, Melissa, would you anticipate that an abatement coming from them would be sometime soon?
I would assume, yes.
How, how long do we have to act on these abatements?
A hundred and eighty days. From the commitment, which was July fifth, I think. I can't remember the exact date.
So looking at eight ninety seven, um, Main Street, um, I think I know that property well, I think.
Yes, it's close to where you live, actually.
Yeah. Um, I mean, there's a very, very large garage next to that double wide as well.
Mm-hmm.
In addition to the, what they're using as their shop and they're selling their machines. I'm assuming that's all being.
Yes, it's a whole.
And I know that I recently bought as well over the last.
Yes, and that's what kind of prompted them to come is because their selling price was less than what we had at, uh, what their purchase price was less than what we had it assessed at.
And I think that also though, was also the house next to it um, also was owned by them.
Yeah. It's all one assessment.
All one.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
So all of that is still need to be.
Okay. Are, are they on the property tax scheme for the property itself as a sales?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've come to the planning board, they've done.
I mean, we belied on Mark, Mr. Gibson, I guess, um, to do the assessment. And if he's recommending these abatements based on further research for, you know, a, a physical look at the property, um, I would be okay with his
Senator.
recommendation for the five properties.
They do require individual motions, which I did try to list out for you.
I have a question on nine seventy five, uh, what happened to the second well? I mean, we must have had it on the tax books for years and years and years with two wells.
That's correct.
And now there's only one. Are there only?
There was only ever one, but it was assessed as two.
Oh.
Yeah.
So we've been in there all these years?
That's correct.
Wow. Does a well add that much value?
I don't. That's a question from Mark. I, I don't know that. He also, he also mentioned, um,
The condition of the.
The condition of the property and that there's a mobile home on the property, um, which is older. And he had them originally, they were assessed, um, as two different properties. One, um, was, um, owned by the father and one owned by the daughter. And now they're owned by the daughter. This is actually Mr. Hatch's mother-in-law. So people abstain from that vote as well.
What is this, what, what are the implications for our revenue line item?
So we, when we did the tax commitment, we added a little bit extra for the overlay anticipating some abatements from customers about. Request from the evaluation, so it will come from the overlay.
So, I, I hate to be mundane about it, but nine seventy-five Main Street. The difference in his assessment versus the abatement request is not just the well, it's also the condition.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah, and that those properties now have one ownership, not two ownerships.
Any other questions? If not, I'll start from the top. I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for one thirty-seven Penny Lane, map seven lot sixteen dash three in the amount of. Fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars, tax amount of five hundred ninety dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded for the property one thirty-seven Penny Lane. Any other questions or comments there? Uh, we'll vote Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Marcus and I. Let me set that one aside. I'll make a motion to approve an abatement for sixty-five Penny Lane. Map seven lot sixteen dash five in the amount of twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars, tax amount of two hundred and forty dollars and ninety cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the property sixty-five Penny Lane. Any other questions or comments on that one? Uh, oh, oh, Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Marcus and I.
Before we move to a motion on one thirteen Cran. I, I would be much more comfortable holding this until we see what the impact is from other property abaters.
Run.
I, I just think that certainly there is a blight on the neighborhood, I don't question that and I. I do believe that their values have decreased as a result of that blight, but we're in the process of trying to mitigate that blight. Uh, we're going to court, spending money trying to uh, make that place uninhabitable and torn down. Uh, and I'd just like to see what the others are thinking in the same thing.
So what if there are no other requests?
Well, we have a hundred and eighty days as you suggest, I would. I would probably be favorable to this request if it was the only request.
If it was?
If it was the only request.
And maybe we could get some guidance from Mark um, about. Cause he mentions two things here, two, right, the, the condition is was part of the abatement request and obviously the location was part of the. Abatement, but I don't know if there's any way for him to split that amount out, to say, you know, what is the condition? Reduction versus the location reduction? Because again, if we get other requests. You know, either amounts got a lot.
Yeah.
The twenty-nine thirty.
I wanted him to do a blanket abatement for those properties, and I understand what you're saying too, but. I feel like this is something we can actually do for them in that neighborhood, you know, everything else. Um, banging my head up against um, continually, but. That was just my thought to him, but he wanted those residents to come in and um, and request an abatement.
I, 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 I agree with that, I think they should request, right? I mean, um, because again, you might have people, how far down do you go?
Yeah.
You know, be good out. Anybody, you know, quarter mile past the property, um, by the country, I fight every day, so.
Yeah.
Um. But.
I'm just apprehensive about the impact. And, and what it may mean down the road. Are we gonna be able to, to lift the evaluations back up if we're successful in the courts? That kind of thing, I just, I'm so uncertain about all of it, that's my.
Yeah.
Everything'd be good, I mean, absolutely, if, yeah, you know, if the property's changed and cleaned or whatever, absolutely, like. We, we should be able to go back and, uh, we, obviously we'd have it on record of what, again, that would be, that's why it would be good to have for Mark. What pieces for the condition versus the location, so if that is gone. You know, that location piece is gone, then we could, you know, adjust that back.
Is there a way that Mark can equate uh, what, what the value is dropping as a result of?
I can ask him that, but.
Condition property, yeah.
I can ask him.
I could look at the condition property thing, it's, it's the blight that worries me.
Uh, I would, I would question also. Where is their civil suit that gives that, where does that stand? And if they go into the court, they say, well, you know, the, the town gave us an abatement for blight on the neighborhood. That might be in their favor, but then again, maybe they won't continue with the civil suit if you reduce their property taxes.
I don't think they, I don't know if they have a civil.
They don't anymore, I, I thought they were, they had something in court.
They, they have, neighbors have gone to court because of a criminal action that occurred. With the resident, but no, they're not, they don't have attorneys themselves trying to fight something, we do. The town.
So we'll table that one and maybe get more information from, from Mark. Here. Um. I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for. Uh, so doesn't have the address, uh, eight, eight ninety-seven Main Street.
Yeah.
Does it, we have, do we have the map and lot on that one?
Um, it should be, can you look on that?
On this one?
Yeah, right at the top in his writing. And.
Alright, there we go.
I don't, I didn't do it on the next motion either, so.
No, I guess I, I thought I saw it, but it.
Yep, so it's map.
Twenty-seven, lot fourteen.
Lot fourteen, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the abatement for eight ninety-seven Main Street. Map twenty-seven lot fourteen in the amount of seventy-three thousand three hundred dollars. Tax amount of eight hundred and six dollars and thirty cents.
Second.
Motion's been made seconded for the um, eight ninety-seven Main Street property, any other questions on that one? Uh, we'll vote Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
I'm staying.
And Marcus and I on that one? And the last one here is I will make a motion to approve an abatement for the nine seventy-five Main Street property. Um, map twenty-seven lot five. In the amount of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred with the tax amount being four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the nine seventy-five Main Street property, any other discussion on that one? Uh, we'll vote again, Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
I'm staying.
Uh, Marcus and I. And we need to sign.
Yes, please.
Uh, on the back, Rachel?
Yes.
So Melissa, I guess we stick something to the calendar for the hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, I will.
Yeah.
I, yeah, it's part of the lead process, but yeah, I will.
Okay.
While you're signing, we have a couple of first things, will these go? Will the tree overlapping Prime Street be left there as well? No, because that is, we're removing it from over the road. And not on your old talks, and only moving to a stain from a boat is a conflict of interest. Uh, the conflict of interest is that Mr. Hatch would be the neighbor to one of them.
Correct.
And mother and mother-in-law for the other.
Yep. Do we have to give a reasonable, I mean, just to know, we know what we're called, right, we have for. For staying. But I don't mind giving that.
Yeah.
But just to clarify, when we're signing these, I have seen, but I still signed, which is a record that I'm staying.
Uh, yeah, and there's only three signatures needed on those anyway, so, yeah.
You want to go or? And it's back. Open one. Anything else for the managers?
Oh, yes, um, just wanted to let you know that I did get the paperwork started with HCP for the voiceover internet. Um, we have to have the lines ported over, so I did that last week, so I'm hoping that the transition will happen quick and soon. Also wanted to remind town council that next week I'll be working in Holton next week for the main municipal association executive committee, but. I will be available remotely and obviously by my phone. Regarding the uh, trio uh, upgrade we discussed last weekend, you had asked me to look into some other communities that use the other software, which is called Muni. And I looked into it and that Muni uh, software is operated through Tyler Technologies. And they do not offer a modular to do motor vehicle registrations, and that's one of our major uses of our software is to do motor vehicle registrations. Um, but I did outline that I sent an email out to the manager's list and the towns that use Highland, um. Um, munis seem to be larger cities and towns and um, so I didn't really get too much. And then I actually sent an inquiry into Tyler Communications regarding that and I haven't received anything back, so.
Hold.
Yeah. The general consensus from the users, as you can see, is that Muni is expensive, it doesn't have the motor vehicle modular and. That's it, pretty much it. So I didn't know what other information you would have got for the software.
Appreciate you looking into that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And one thing I did, when I went to that meeting a couple of weeks ago, um. Trio told us, they have three hundred and ten towns that do, that they service, there's only five hundred and twenty towns in the state. And not every town has software, you know, a lot of plantations and townships don't have uh, software, so. They seem to hold the market for that for sure. One of the comments I received from, from the farming's management manager is that she's aware of a new software that's being developed, so. Maybe in the future there will be a change, but it does appear the trio is our, is our option, right?
Yeah, sounds like, I can't remember from the last meeting, do we need any action from us?
Well, I just would like to have your approval because it's a little bit of change in what I had originally anticipated, I had originally started a reserve this year. Um, the start for the upgrade, it's still gonna be the same budgetary, but I'm gonna commit to it now. And we'll get that two thousand dollar discount, but I'm not gonna do the upgrade until um, June, by December of next year. So it's a little bit different than what we had kind of planned when we were budgeting.
So we're getting a discount for it?
Yes, by signing on the dotted line, we get a two thousand dollar discount, and I did bear my with them. My intention would be, we'll get the two thousand dollar discount, we'll budget um, next year for the upgrade, which will be an additional. But I remember, luckily I haven't done it in a couple of weeks. Uh, thirty-five hundred dollars for the upgrading and fifteen hundred dollars to host from December to July. I did confirm with them that that would be their price, it's a three thousand dollar annual fee, but because we're only gonna be using it for six months. We only have to pay that, so that's what we're committing to is that in twenty-five, twenty-six, we will allot those funds for the, the trio upgrade.
So it not only locks us into the two thousand dollar discount, it locks us into the price for.
That's correct, yeah. Is everybody good with that?
I think you should all work, any motion?
I'll take the motion, thank you.
Uh, a motion that we move forward with um. Uh, after the trio um, municipal software upgrades. Second, a motion been made seconded to uh, for the trio upgrade. Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll vote Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Marcus and I.
Um, so I did do a flag placement and donation policy, um, and brought that forward to the council and that. Just outweighs exactly what we talked about at the last meeting. Um. And council wanted to review that and either make a motion to approve or make changes.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I am checking that. I have one question, Melissa, that you might be able to clean up very quickly. The, the payment that said the only flag displayed on utility poles by the town. Will be the traditional American flag, are other people allowed to put on these town?
They are not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Another question for me, um, is there any timeframe? Or a donation?
No, but they're done.
To be listed in the, in the book?
Well, no.
If they want to put up, it has to be before.
Yeah, it would, it would be the same because our town report comes out in May and the flags go up in Memorial Day, so it'd be the same timeline. But I will create a website, a webpage, um, and they'll be listed on throughout there as we get, and I can even like, when the flag will be placed or that's something.
Okay, so if somebody sends in a donation in July, the flags are already out.
Yeah, it won't go up till next year, that's correct.
But it would be listed on the site that year, okay.
Yeah, and then in the town report, the following year. Yeah.
Motion's been made seconded for the new um, flag placement policy and donation policy, any other questions on that? Uh, we'll vote Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Marcus and I.
Um, and then lastly, I did create a webpage, a page on our website regarding the library voucher program. Um, so that explains it out there pretty, pretty well, the library and approved it, so. Um, so far we've had seven vouchers provided to Bradley residents for the, a bunch for them. And that's all I have from my managers report.
Any questions on the managers report this evening? That we haven't already talked about? If not, we'll jump down to new business, new business from you, Melissa?
Um, next meeting, which I believe will be the twenty-fourth of September, we will have to have a public hearing regarding general assistance appendices. We do that every year at this time, just wanna let you know about that.
Okay.
I'll have the information for you before the meeting.
That's it for new business from you?
Yes.
Any new business from the council?
Um, I had one person uh, come up to me and ask me about um, what the planning board is doing. Um, they feel that we don't have any more businesses in this town and, and feel that, um. In their words, uh, there's not the school here anymore and.
Yeah.
That they would like to bring more people into the town. Um, and I don't know if the town has considered that, even if they want that, but I said I'd bring it forward.
Sure, well, the planning board meets once a month, um, and they will review any business applications that come to them. Or slight plan review, but the planning board's job really isn't like economic development, you know, we try to. The council and them would work together to make sure our ordinances are friendly to that, but. To be quite honest with you, there's not a lot of real estate available in the town of Bradley for real estate development. Um, our, we're just a residential uh, community. The planning board, they just met last month and what they looked at was potentially uh, property maintenance ordinance and uh. So they're reviewing that, they're discussing our comprehensive plan, so they do meet regularly, but they only would review an application. That came, came to them. Uh, the property uh, down to you, I can't remember, eight ninety-seven Main Street, that, that was a land use, um. Uh, application that they reviewed, there's another, a little body shop that was up here, they came in for a change of plan. Um, across the street from the entrance into Main Forest and Lock Museum at the government road. That's owned by Canopska Indian Nation and they came in and discussed having a community garden there, that's what those shelters and stuff are, is that the, the, the nation has uh, community gardens. So they do whatever is come brought forth to them, but it's not really their job to, to go out and. Look for business, that would be more like an economic developer director and we just don't. I don't know where the development would go.
Okay.
You know, cause I've had businesses want to come to town, you know, like smaller hair salons or that type of things and. I, I don't know where to put them, is there, we don't have an industrial park, you know, we don't really have any place to, to put them.
Okay. Good question, I mean, and, and have the, you know, let that resident know as well, you know, join the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're looking for planning board members as well. Yeah, we're, and they're looking for planning board members as well, we have, we do have a full core, which we haven't had for very long time. But the planning board allows for two alternates, so if they wanted to just come and listen to the meeting, and then if somebody didn't come to the next meeting, they could vote. That type of thing.
Very good, thank you. Any other new business? From the council? If not, we'll jump down to item number seven, unfinished business, unfinished business from you, Melissa?
I just wanted to remind Town Council and and residents that are here and that are watching online that net tomorrow night at six o'clock is our Community Resilience Partnership Workshop. So Eastern Main Development Corporation will be here and they'll be hosting the, uh, meeting and they're looking for input from Bradley residents. On what things they think need to be done to help with climate change. Um, one of the things that I identified in the funding model is that there's development for green space, and we do have a ballpark and a small parcel of land that's right on. The Penobscot River that I would love to see the residents have some input on how to develop that and use that. So hopefully people will come again tomorrow night at six o'clock.
Well, they're gonna finish business from you?
None.
And unfinished business from the council?
The perennial one or altogether too frequent one, you heard anything on one fourteen?
No, I, last meeting, I think I addressed it, I'm not sure if you're.
I wanted to.
Meeting, um. So he, the judge wrote a letter to the Attorney General's office asking that the Attorney General step in and require the state of Maine. To, uh, have Adult Protective Services evaluate him. Um, and they also appointed a. Guardian at Leon from, his name is Toothbaker from Ellsworth, I can't remember his first name. Jeff, Jeff.
I don't know.
And. The attorney had tried to reach out to the, uh, uh, Mr. Toothbaker and hadn't, hadn't been successful, so.
We don't know if the state was able to reach him.
I don't have any.
Okay, thanks, Melissa.
Any other unfinished businesses evening? If not, I will make a motion to accept the municipal warrants that were presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the, uh, warrants from this evening, any questions on any of those that we all reviewed and signed? So Ovo, Larry.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
Dwayne.
Hi.
Jim.
Hi.
Marx and I. The next meeting is set for September twenty fourth, same place, same time, um, you said there's gonna be a public hearing that, um, for that meeting as well. I will not be available, um, for that meeting, I'll be out of town, if anybody else is not available, please let the, uh. Office and other councils know.
And then the new, um. New comment online is Edward Jackson thanking us for the flag donation policy, and I would like to thank Mr. Jackson for mentioning a couple of weeks ago. He's the one who brought it, that idea to our attention, so that worked out well.
Yeah, it helps, I mean, it's gonna help even, you know, budgeting for for flag.
Yeah.
I think, I think it'll be popular.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think, anything else this evening? If not, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second, second, third.
Again.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it looks like it may be a little dark for me to swing by. But I will look tomorrow.
Thank you, and I thank you all, Steve, and I'm right, and I think maybe when you make the arrangements for this.